Everybody, we're gonna jump right in. I need a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those post. Action items from closed session. We had some closed session minutes for January 30th to 2017th. They're not ready yet. We'll get them next month. So, we're gonna move on to communication. Anybody got anything they want to address the school board on any agenda item? Okay, moving on to consent. We got five, one, two. What we got at five eight?
Yes.
Anybody want to pull any of them? Okay, then do I have a motion to approve five one to five eight as presented? Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thanks. Betsy, please.
Yes. Siren?
Yes.
Weitzel?
Yes.
Worley?
Yes.
Yuravich?
Yes.
Carter?
Yes.
Maddox?
Yes.
And Cobb?
Yes. Personnel consent items. We got six one to six twenty-five. Anybody need to pull any of them?
I do. I have to give the mean number. Um, well, Linda, do you wanna pull six point two one when Russ is back in the room?
Sure.
Employment of GHS principal. And then, um, I wanted to pull, um, let's see. Yeah, let's see. I need to pull... Where's the food service director? Oh, that's six point...
Six two three.
Oh, yeah. Six point two three. And then, um, six point one nine, job description creation. So, um, I guess...
Anybody else?
I can't pull this up. Six dot two one. Yes, six point one.
Susan, can you repeat what ones you...
I have to pull six point one nine and six point two three.
Okay.
And Linda, I'm pulling six point eight two.
Two one.
Okay.
Okay, so then do I have a motion to approve six one to six eighteen, six twenty, six twenty-two, and then six twenty-four, twenty-five as presented?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Betsy, please.
Yes, hold on just a sec here. Yes, Weitzel?
Yes.
Worley?
Yes.
Yuravich?
Yes.
Carter?
Yes.
Maddox?
Yes.
Siren?
Yes.
Cobb?
Yes. Uh, six nineteen, job description creation. Susan, you wanna pull any?
Yes, I wanted to just, um, the job description creation is for a financial analyst slash report coordinator. And the primary reason for ultimately this description of a job is for cost control. Is that correct, Jen?
Yes.
Because a lot of overtime was being spent getting this work done. So, it's more cost efficient to add a part-time position as a reporting analyst than continuing the current situation. Is that correct?
That's absolutely correct.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Any further comments on six nineteen then? I have a motion then to approve it?
So moved.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
I'll second that, Steve.
Thank you. Betsy, please.
Carter?
Yes.
Maddox?
Yes.
Siren?
Yes.
Weitzel?
Yes.
Worley?
Yes.
Yuravich?
Yes.
And Cobb?
Yes. Uh, six twenty-one, employment of a GHS principal.
Well, it's my honor to present to you Dr. Russell Taven, who will be our high school principal. I had the privilege of being on the interview team with him during the interview process. Very, very impressed. A very student-centered person, very much involved with curriculum, very good expertise in curriculum. He was named the IPA Southwest Region Principal of the Year, which those are not easy awards to win. And also, the NAACP Leader in Education Award, as well as the 100 Men Black Education Leadership Award, which I think just goes to prove that you are a student-centered person. You want all of our children to be successful, that all children should have high expectations, and you were there to see that they do. And that our staff, you've had experience with 200 staff, I think, in your previous high school. And that's, um, that's a lot of people, a lot of staff. And we really look forward to having you in our district. I think you are going to move us from good to great to great to great.
Dr. Taven, I had the past pleasure usually to lead the standing ovation when we have new staff join our district, so I can't break my pattern now, so...
So, why don't we have a motion?
Oh, okay.
I'll make the motion that we accept the employment of Dr. Taven to our district and look forward to you working with us. And now, while we start...
Second.
We're ready, we're ready.
Do you second anything?
Brandon.
Brandon, okay. Very good.
Any further discussion? Betsy, please.
Yes. Worley?
Yes.
Yuravich?
Yes.
Carter?
Yes.
Maddox?
Yes.
Siren?
Yes.
Weitzel?
Yes.
Cobb?
Yes.
Who did that best?
And now...
Greg. Moving on, six two three, approval of district food services director duties. Job description.
Uh, yes, I pulled this. And this, I, is a, this is a new position that has been determined to be needed. And I was wondering, Charlotte, if you could provide a little bit more information, one of which is, are the responsibilities that are outlined on the job description typical of industry standards that food ser, food service directors carry out? Would that be a true statement?
That's a true statement, yes.
Okay, and then, looking at the responsibilities, it also is very clear that fiscal management of food costs is also very important. So, this food, the food service director will be reporting to you as well as the principals of the buildings, I understand. But that you will, we know that you're very good at controlling costs, Charlotte. So, I'm happy to see that this is an area that will merit close attention on the numbers, food service numbers.
Yeah, I think by taking these steps, it's gonna make the program sustainable. It's hopefully also going to avoid us having to increase prices. So, that's a goal, is that we don't wanna increase those prices back to the community.
Well, thank you.
Any further discussion? All right, then do I have a motion to approve six twenty-three as presented?
So moved.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
I'll second that, Steve.
Thanks, Greg. Betsy, please.
Yes, Maddox?
Yes.
Siren?
Yes.
Weitzel?
Yes.
Worley?
Yes.
Yuravich?
Yes.
Carter?
Yes.
And Cobb?
Yes. Okay, moving on to seven one, under financial, we have a resolution for an inter-fund loan.
I'm putting this resolution forward now so it gives me the freedom and flexibility to tap into working cash if we end up needing to do that in the coming month. Last month, we spent 2.1 million out of the Ed Fund. Currently, our working cash is a little over 2 million, and there's a very strong likelihood that I will need to tap into that before your next board meeting. Of course, the state of Illinois could always come through with the 1.4 million that they owe our district, and that would put that off for another month, but I'm not gonna hold my breath for that.
Oh, you mean that 100% funding we received this year?
Yeah. That would be it.
100% of proration.
Oh, no, they did prorate us this year, they just didn't send us our kid.
Yeah.
Right.
Sorry, sorry, Charlotte.
Any further discussion?
Just waiting for you to read, Justin.
All right, I got a resolution authorizing loan from the working cash fund to the educational fund, whereas section five, twenty-five of the school code authorizes transfers from the working cash fund to any other fund of the district in order to accommodate cash flow conditions, and whereas the district anticipates 2017 tax receipts in the educational fund in the amount of $21,114,000, and whereas the aggregate amount of warrants or notes issued in anticipation of the collection of such receipts is currently zero. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the treasurer is hereby authorized and directed to transfer up to $2 million from the working cash fund to the educational fund, which transfer shall be reimbursed to the working cash fund upon the collection of anticipated taxes in the educational fund.
So moved.
Do I have a motion? Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Dwayne. Betsy, please.
Uh, Yuravich?
Yes.
Carter?
Yes.
Maddox?
Yes.
Siren?
Yes.
Weitzel?
Yes.
Worley?
Yes.
And Cobb?
Yes. Charlotte, thank you. Moving on, full business, we've got some fuel bids, Jim?
Yes.
This upstein here?
In your, in your packet, put the bid tabs in there. As we've done previously, we've sought gasoline and diesel fuel bids. We did both a wholesale bid and a fixed price bid. The fixed price bid is what we're most comfortable with, otherwise, we fluctuate with the market. We really only had two bidders that bid the fixed price, which was Petroleum Traders and Prairieland FS. Petroleum Traders actually bid the lowest price. Our bid opening was on February 15th, and they contacted me late last week and wanted to modify their bid price because the market went up. Told them that we had a bid price, they needed to stick with it, that we didn't allow them to continue to watch the market and continue to change their bid. So, with that, they withdrew their bid. So, at this point, we really only have one fixed price bidder, which is Petroleum FS, or, uh, which is Prairieland FS, which is the vendor that we used for the previous two years. They're also the low gas provider bidder. So, at this point, I would, I would recommend that we continue using Prairieland FS for both gasoline and diesel. Is that unusual for people to pull their bids like that? And wanna speculate along the curves, or? They, um, they submitted a bid. I've never had anybody do that, but I've also never had anybody try to change their bid as, between the bid opening date and the time it went to the board. In fact, I had gotten, um, early in the, as the bids were being published, I had gotten an email from, from Petroleum Traders, provided me with some language that they, that they wanted to include in our bid, and had responded that we wouldn't, we wouldn't allow them to continue to market, uh, market watch until the evening of the board meeting. I said, "I, I don't know what your price is gonna be when I get to the board meeting. How would I, how would I ever recommend a price if they won't give me a price until after you, okay?" And they wouldn't let you do it if it dropped. You wouldn't be able to turn around and say, "Hey, look, it dropped." That's the price we're getting. They, they say they would, but it's one of those things that, um, it's a fixed price bid, I needed the bid price as of the day of the opening. Otherwise, everybody gets the opportunity to continue to change their bids. So, it, it's not fair to the other bidders who didn't do that either, so, uh, when they knew that we wouldn't allow them to do that, then they withdrew their bid.
I have a question, and it's always a, I mean, it's basically, are, what's your recommended length of time? 12 months, 24 months, or buy on the spot market?
We bid 24 months two years ago. They are willing to give us the 12-month price for the first 12 months and the 24-month price for the, for the second 12 months. It's what they did before.
Right, and that didn't, I mean, looking back, it's very difficult with hindsight, but looking at that, um, oil dropped more unexpectedly than was anticipated. So, um, you know, the market, I mean, we did well on the first year, the first 12 months. We didn't do so well on the second 12 months. So, my, I guess my question is, is your recommendation, and anybody who's bought on the spot market or had futures, chime in, please. Would it, would it be the recommendation to just go with one year or two years?
We did buy spot bid until two years ago.
Yeah, I know.
That's, that's how we had done...
I know.
Forever, and I think we, um, we benefited in the long run. If you look at, if you look at what we budgeted and what we spent, I think...
Right.
But we may have spent less if we continued to spot bid also. But from a budgeting perspective, it's, it's very beneficial to, to know what you're gonna spend. The only, the only thing that we really had to do was give them a minimum number of gallons, and we did that, and we met the diesel without any question. We purchased more than what we had given them. I asked similar questions even of the vendors. I mean, the market went up four days after we got the bid, so...
Right.
I guess if you, if you know what it's gonna do, it's the million-dollar question.
Well, I calculated as 2.2, no, let's say 2.30 over the, over the 24-month period. And diesel's been, you know, it's been jumping all over the place. Do you have any comments that you could make, Steve, on this issue?
This is a really good price. It could go to three and a half.
Okay.
That's why you, that's why you lock in, you try to protect yourself. That way, you know where your costs are at.
Okay.
We've seen three, three and a half dollar diesel fuels, so, and we know we're gonna need it.
Okay.
And I recall this is the same discussion we had last time.
Right.
I suspect it'll be the same discussion we have every time we go through bids.
Yeah, right, it will be.
Because you don't know. That's, that's why they, they speculate.
Right.
Um, and what, what you do is you, the 12-month one is probably nearest to what you see today.
Okay, that's good.
Yeah, but...
Could it go below this? Yeah. Will it? Probably. Will it stay there very long? I don't know. It's down there pretty, at pretty low price.
Historically, this is a pretty good price.
So, anytime you can lock in at a, at a price that you know you're gonna make some, some money, then...
Betsy, can you just scroll down a little bit to show the gasoline price, too? That's the, that's the 12-month and the, and the 24-month gasoline price as well.
And so, the fact that they're gonna give us the 12-month price for the first 12 months and then the 24-month price for the second 12 months is actually really pretty good.
That's pretty awesome. Nobody else would do that.
Of the two.
Nobody else would do that. And part of the reason that they're, they're doing that is they've already purchased a fuel. They have, they have it in storage, they've already paid for it, so, they, they know what their prices are, so they don't have to worry about trying to speculate on usage and so on and so forth. So, they, they already have it in storage.
Did Petroleum Traders withdraw from the gasoline bid also?
Um, they did not, but their, their prices were substantially higher. Uh, they were, they were 227, 225, and we're looking at 214 and 234. When you do, when you do the math for the 24 months, it's about...
Two cents.
$800, it's about $800 difference, $700 difference. So, the, the net total FS is about $700 cheaper. The, the more gallons we use, the, the better off it is. I think we're about 13 cents cheaper in the first 12 months and about nine cents higher in the second. So, the more we use, the, the better we are.
I just have to say, you've always been good about bringing a lot of facts to the board, and this is the most impressive yet.
Oh, thanks. Thank you.
Most thorough.
Thank you.
It is.
Okay, any further discussion then? No, I need a motion to approve the recommendation to use Prairieland FS for a 24-month bid on diesel fuel and gasoline.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Yes, Siren?
Yes.
Weitzel?
Yes.
Worley?
Yes.
Yuravich?
Yes.
Carter?
Yes.
Maddox?
Yes.
And Cobb?
Yes. Jim, thanks. Moving on, uh, we've got eight two, looking to improve the entrance at Chatham Elementary.
Sorry. We're seeking permission throughout to, go out for bid and to get drawings on building a security entrance at Chatham Elementary. It's the only school in district that does not have a security entrance at this time. So, Mr. Zeller's here, they, they drew this sketch up quite some time ago, long before I ever got here, but I think it's a pretty good rendition of what needs to happen. So, I mean, if we have questions, I'll be willing to answer any questions, but we just need a security entrance at Chatham Elementary School.
And one of the things that, you know, I know this has been something that the board has talked about in previous years, and, and what you have before you there is, we wanna look, as you know, we're looking at efficiencies and how to maximize the dollars. Above all, it's about student safety. And the two options really come down to, do we construct something on the existing building, or that is going to be a permanent fix, or are we going to do something to where there's a vestibule where someone checks in, then you're having to hire someone to be in that position? And as we looked at this, although, and, and these are round numbers, I believe, and I believe they're round numbers. The one looked at approximately $100,000 in terms of changing the entrance and then having to staff that with someone. So, that's an ongoing expense. And then the other option is approximately $400,000 to where it would be a permanent structural fixture so that someone doesn't have to man that facility and then can also buzz and have a bird's eye view of those that are entering the, the buildings.
So, would you bid these both out, or do we need to make a decision which way we wanna go?
We're gonna just bid the one out.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. The recommendation is, is the, the more costly, the $400,000, it'll be around $400, $400, $500,000. But it's, you know, there's no salary involved, and, you know, it's, it's a permanent fix.
Oh, and there's no parents complaining that they have to leave their IDs with total strangers every time they walk in a building, which is a huge issue personally. I would, I would, if we're doing a job.
And what I wanted to do was, you know, when we come in, and Mike and I talked about this, was providing just the two stark contrast in terms of options. We're certainly supportive, and I am, and Mike is, and I believe the school community would be supportive of a permanent fix. Although more costly at the beginning, we would absorb those costs over a period of time through not having to have that particular vestibule staffed.
I'm Mike. Welcome back after a few months of, of being away. So, basically, we're, um, the work area principal, assistant principal, et cetera, et cetera. Is that square footage going to be enlarged as well?
When we, if you notice the date on this...
I know.
It's about seven years old, so...
I know.
When we first started looking at it, um, we, we tried to figure out what part of the, and it was a classroom at that time. Now, I think it's a workroom, teacher workroom. We looked at what part of the current administrative office we could move into just that one classroom. You notice that the plan, and it is just a sketch, and we haven't done any more than that, so, the design really has yet to be determined once you've decided that you're gonna take that approach as a, as opposed to just a simple vestibule. That has to be all, all worked out. You know, what goes in it, you know, principal, assistant principal, you know, you know, what other kind of spaces go in there besides the main secretary, you know, that, that's out front now, so, um, we, we don't really know. We have to have additional meetings to work all that out, so. And it's gonna, you know, there, in the current area, there's a nurse area right now, and whether that has to move or whether it can be remoted, you know, those are decisions that still need to be made.
And of course, the Chatham Elementary administration is very much involved in these conversations.
Yes.
That would be good.
Yeah, she's, she's, we've, we've had a couple of meetings.
Has Randy helped over this? Has Randy had a chance to look over this?
Randy's been involved in meetings as well.
And he'll continue to be involved.
Absolutely.
So, what happens then if, uh, 'cause we don't know exactly how it's gonna lay out, it comes in at, say, 500,000. We, at what point do we come back and re-vote?
Mike's already run the numbers on it for today's pricing, and I think he came back at 409. So, it'll be, as I said earlier, be around 400, $400, $450,000. We're, we're really comfortable with that.
Okay. Well, I just heard that we didn't know how the layout was gonna be.
Well, we don't.
I guess I'm asking if it's over 410, if I'll wanna come back.
I'll let Mike answer that question.
Yeah, well, you know, I, yeah, we definitely will. You know, we will, our best estimate's gonna be when we know what the scope of work is for sure, and we'll definitely advise you. But hopefully, we can, you know, we can keep it within your range, so.
But if we don't, the point is if we don't start moving forward now, we're not gonna be able to get it done this year. So, that's why I'm just asking.
That's the idea.
Just to take the next step, that's what we're really looking for.
Last time we talked about it, I think it was 300,000, and I don't know what the scope of work was. I just know how these can get out of hand if we're...
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah.
So...
Randy, are you comfortable either way?
I'd prefer the, the second option, where we move the office. It would look, uh, it would be similar to what we have at G.I.S., which has worked very nicely after the remodel we did there. The, the situation at G.I.M.S. is great for that building, but we would have to hire a security monitor, so you'd be adding headcount, and that would be an ongoing expense where this way you'd be once and done. So, I'd prefer the second option. Right now, it's, uh, untenable, it's just not safe.
No, it's not. Part of that was, 'cause I have to say at first, we thought that part of the solution was, well, just mirror that of, of G.I.M.S. But the entrance into that building, I mean, once you go into Chatham, as you well know, you've got access to those hallways, as opposed to at the middle school, you don't. So, you've gotta check through, so it is a different environment. But to your point, Dwayne, I think it's valid, and that is, I think, what we, uh, is to go out and find out what that bid would be, get those plans developed, find out what that is, because we do need to come back and make sure that we're within a range of expense that the board and the community are comfortable with.
Yeah, we're by no means committed at this point at all.
Right.
Well, I, I mean, we don't want Mike to put in, you know, the time and the fees involved of drawing up this, um, this revision to the entrance way, so, I mean, perhaps we should have an understanding that it could be in the 400 up to, I mean, I mean, I'm comfortable. If you say it's between 400 and 450, we have to give you a little bit of leeway. That's personally how I feel. And then, you come back and say, you know, "We built it for much less," just like O'Shea did. Well, O'Shea...
Well, we're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna come back to you once we find out exactly what the number is.
Okay.
Right, we're not...
We're not, we're not gonna build this thing without approving it. This is just going to get numbers and putting drawings together.
Well, but the issue becomes historically, oh, it's $550, but the bids are already in, and they won't honor them, and prices are probably gonna go up, and we don't have time to get it done. So, you gotta approve it tonight. And I'm just trying to avoid that right up front.
I understand. I understand. That's not the way we're gonna do this.
Okay.
Okay.
We're just approving for it to go out.
I expect the point well taken.
I do notice there's no restrooms in the office area.
That's true. That's true, yeah.
Well, there's a sink there, so there's plumbing there. Can one be added?
Well, the sink is more, is in the workroom, smaller workroom area. And there is, you know, to have a restroom, you need a four-inch sewer. That is just hooked up to the little two-inch sewer that's the water cooler, or drinking fountain out in the hallway. There is an issue if we try to add restrooms in there. You know, it's gonna get, gonna get expensive. I've already looked into possible options, and you have to run quite a little ways in that building to get into a sewer that'll be appropriate. There's a lot of planning that needs to be done and worked out, thought out.
And this is one of the original buildings, too, of Chatham Elementary. So, you know, back in those days, they didn't have four-inch mains either. You know, they had smaller plumbing than they have on today's standards.
That building used to be two-story.
True.
Could you change the location of the main entrance?
No. That's gonna stay at seven. Cam? Good? Okay.
Any other questions, comments?
I'm very happy to see that this open item is now going to be addressed.
I just didn't realize it had been seven years. So, have a motion?
Tell me.
Second? Thanks. Betsy, please.
Sure. Maddox?
Yes.
Searin?
Yes.
Weitzel?
Yes.
Worley?
Yes.
Zerivit?
Yes.
Carter?
Yes.
And Cobb?
Yes. Mike, thank you. Mike, appreciate it. Moving on, new business, nine-one, first reading, policy seven, point two-seventy-eight.
Hey, before we go on, just to clarify, we were only talking about the entrance, the entrance, right?
Yes.
Because there were three items listed on that.
There were. Them got pulled.
Okay.
For the future.
Just making sure.
Yep. Any other questions, first reading?
It's just based on a new law.
Okay. Information only then. Moving on, ten, communication, future board meeting dates. March second, A-Link Division meeting at Meridian Middle High School. March sixth, personnel. March twenty-seventh, regular board meeting.
Okay. Knowing that we have to complete Dr. Wood's evaluation before Lisa and Linda leave the board.
We're working on a date.
Are we?
Yep.
Into this week?
Yes.
Perfect. Thank you.
Are we gonna have a meeting by the end of this week?
No, we'll have a date. You'll have a date.
No, a date. It's just a date.
Any other dates anybody needs to be aware of? Okay, moving on. Anybody got anything they want to address the school board on? Any topic?
Hey, I wanted to chat amongst ourselves just for a second. It's my intention, I don't know if it's the right place to talk about it, but I'm hoping that before the election, that we can kind of make a decision. My thought is that we only have four individuals running for four spots currently, although the way Ball District is set up, only one person technically can be elected.
Correct.
And I'm hoping that we can maybe discuss potentially going ahead and suggesting that our appointee be the fourth candidate before we enter that election.
Well, he can't legally, because write-ins have ended.
He can't legally what?
They can't legally run at this point because he would've had to file his write-in candidate.
No, I'm suggesting that the fourth person that's on the ballot right now be our appointee.
They can't.
But isn't that person also from Ball?
That person's also on Ball.
You've got two people from Ball.
Do we have to appoint from another district, or do we appoint anyone?
No, you have to appoint from a different township than Ball.
Can we change that?
No.
No. Only if you, you can't.
Can we as a board change that?
No, it cannot as, it's an elect...
It has to be, go on the ballot as a referendum so the community would vote to do away with those township restrictions.
And if any one of the townships said no, then you couldn't do it.
Right.
Okay, I didn't realize we had a requirement of who we appointed.
At any one time, only three people from any township in this district can serve on the board.
So, at some point, we need to inform the public that anyone who would like to be considered for that, send a letter of intent to the board.
Right. There's a period of time after which the board has been seated that you have to move forward with an appointment and notification, and so...
So, it can't be before the April meeting?
Right.
Because there isn't vacancy until after the board.
Right. Yeah, it doesn't exist till then.
Yeah, right.
Do we, do we have to only choose from the people that make application? Or can we choose ourselves as candidates, whoever on the candidate board?
I believe a candidate has to express interest.
That would be beneficial. Yeah, that would be beneficial. I just want to make sure that we're covering all this.
One, two, three, you're it.
Anything else?
Yes. Could I take a minute to thank the staff? Mr. Lee, I just wanted to take a minute and thank you and the staff and Dr. Wood and Betsy for the great communication that you did with the community and the parents a couple weeks ago. I know we had a pretty big situation going on at the high school. And every Monday, I have breakfast with several parents in the community, and they expressed their gratitude to me today for how the communication was handled and how on top of things they felt and how grateful they were to you and the staff and to Dr. Wood and to Betsy for the communications with the community. And I just really appreciate it. I just want to thank you.
Thank you. We did get a lot of compliments, and I'm glad you mentioned it. It wasn't just me that wrote that. Betsy was a big part of that, and Dr. Wood looked it over, and Randy looked it over. So, it had a lot of eyes on it, and I think we came up with a good product that hopefully settles some nerves in the county. Thank you.
Well, and along those same lines, I understand tomorrow is a meeting for parents at the high school. Would you like to address that, Jim? Because I think that should be publicized.
Yeah, one of the things we can say, actually, we're gonna meet the students as well tomorrow. The same two groups are gonna visit with students during the day in the morning. They're gonna visit with parents at night in an open kind of forum. Chatham Police Department is going to provide some students, information to the students regarding consequences and, you know, what they're seeing. Then Gateway Foundation is sending out some individuals who have gone through some rehab and are currently going through rehab in regards to substance abuse and how it's affected them. They're gonna shoot out the students. Then in the evening, the Chatham Police Department will spend time discussing kind of look-forers and things, not only in maybe how someone might be under the influence, but where things can be hidden and the tricks that are used out there to hopefully make parents and community more aware. And then Gateway will also have a counselor there talking about some of the, what they see and effects of students who have abused substances. So, hopefully, it'll be a very informative night for everyone.
Well, and I would, I would really encourage them to emphasize, the police to emphasize. You know, if your child says they're going to the park to play basketball, check that out. And also, that kids can be in the wrong place at the wrong time and get pulled in, and they could suffer consequences just for being at the wrong place at the wrong time.
Yeah, and we could share that with them. You know, they basically did this presentation to our staff back in September, and it was extremely helpful and has been extremely helpful. We've proven that as we've dealt some things through the, it was very helpful.
Is it an assembly that you're going to have?
Yeah, we're gonna bring them in by grade level.
Okay.
Tomorrow, the half-day makes it really hard. So, we're gonna address freshmen, sophomores, and juniors tomorrow. And then we're gonna address the sophomore, excuse me, the seniors on April fifth, which is the SAT day. We're gonna bring them in for a graduation meeting and a picture, and we're gonna do their meeting with Gateway and PD at that time.
And tomorrow night's meeting begins at seven?
High school, I'm torn.
Yeah.
And just a couple other things. It's important to note, you know, this is something that Jim and Randy and his team have been working on for some time. You know, this isn't a response. You know, we talked about this earlier, that Jim and his team is always being proactive and making sure that kids know and understand issues related to drugs and advocacy for making good choices. And I also just want to state the response. I know that everyone that you've mentioned certainly appreciates it, and I know that you mean this to me inclusive of everyone. The nice thing was to see is how everybody responded, whether that's staff, teachers, our support staff, or bus drivers, you know, having to get buses over there to transport kids, knowing that over at G.E.S., students were able to go over and take, take cover in that building while a search was going on. So, it was a very well-calculated and well-oiled machine. And there were a lot of people who played a very important role in that. And, you know, the communications that I had with parents express that as well. So, there were a lot of people involved in this process. So, kudos to our staff for stepping up to those plates, because you never know when you're gonna be throwing a curveball like that. So, it wasn't just a drill. It was an actual, you know, here we go. So, how are you gonna respond? And they did a super job, so thank you to everyone. Appreciate it.
My understanding is it was all hands on deck that day, or two days. So, and a couple of citizens actually asked me, oh, but you've had a rough two days. And I said, no. We got good people. We let them handle it. And it hit me. I didn't have to think about it. So, that's wonderful.
And, you know, it certainly reinforces the importance of having Randy on board and, unfortunately, you know, it's, and knowing Randy for a number of years, I knew that he had everything well in hand, and I just appreciate all of the work that you do, Randy, to keep our kids safe.
I want to quickly mention, I can't leave this out, the help we got from Tammy and Dan over at G.E.S. when we sent kids over there. Outstanding.
Thank you.
Hi.
Hi. My name's Melissa, and I have a child at the high school. And I have a question. I appreciate the parent night and the upcoming assembly for the children. What other action plans can we take? I talked to my high school student. He's been through it all, and he tells me what he sees. I know legally, you can't have a representative in every bathroom. I understand there's privacy and things like that. But as I have heard, there are common bathrooms that a lot of these activities of selling and distribution take place, or there's specific times. What else can we do as a community to help you as the board besides talking to our students to help pinpoint these items within the school district and try to do more preventative onsite measures?
Melissa, what's your last name?
Smith.
I'm sorry?
Smith.
Thank you.
Is this at the high school?
Yes, sir.
What we've encouraged our parents particularly to do is to help us monitor this. You know, we only have kids for eight hours a day. And as you know, I've been asked why they don't have cameras in the restrooms. Usually chuckle, but you know, we can't, obviously, we can't do that. We do have cameras outside the restrooms. And so, when we have an allegation of something going on, and we do have those kids, we review the footage to see who's going in and out. We also have hall monitors, both male and female. And PDs, male and female, that go through the restroom and check. But we can't be in there around the clock because there's not enough staff. You know, we're, there's just too many kids. We can't do it. So, we, you know, we do follow up rumors. A lot of it is rumors. And when the parents get something that they, that's really bothering them, they have a person to call us and let us talk, and talk to their kids, with their permission also. So, we're trying to keep a handle on it. I don't think, there's a perception that it's awful. And the perception's reality for some people, it's really not that bad.
Right, and I understand that.
We do have an issue, but it's not that bad.
What else can we do as a community to come together? Because there was, excuse me, there was a lot of comment on the Village Voice page. And I mean, it's, I just sat my student down. Luckily, we have a fairly good relationship, and I said, you need to lay it all out. I need to know everything from A to Z. You, your friends, you know, I need to know everything. Luckily, he opened up to me. But one person sat on there, you know, we are such a prestigious community. I grew up here. I'm kindergarten all the way through. And the amount of pressure we put on our students. Is there anything from Dr. Wood, your previous experiences, how we can kind of back off the performance pressures? Or what can we also do to help ensure our, help our students to feel, hey, it's okay to just be average? You don't have to be exceptional. You don't have to be the all-star. It's okay to be average. Is there anything from your history?
Yeah, no, no, those are, those are good points. You know what? There are pressures growing up. You know, they're all around us. You've experienced it. I've experienced it. And I don't want to take away, we want them to be exceptional. Now, there may be different levels of exceptional based on that student's ability. So, I say it's important to always maintain very high expectations. Because if you lower the bar, then that's, you know, that's what they know. So, in terms of expectations, I think that we need to maintain high expectations. I think being your kid's business. You know what you've done? I would love all of our parents to do that. My daughters, I have three of them, two in college, I've got one in the eighth grade. I'm in their business. I'm not there to be their friend. I know it's, I have the codes to my daughter's cell phones. I check it randomly on occasion. It's not a privacy issue with me. They're my child, and I wish more parents were in their children's business. Because I think that's the only way that we're going to be able to solve this issue. I was asked by someone, does the high school have a drug problem? I said, not only does our high school not have a drug problem, there's not one school in the state of Illinois that has a drug problem. Now, if you were to rephrase that and ask me, do we have a society that overuses prescription medication for which their children have access and are prescribed medication? That's a huge problem in our society. And so, you know, we combat that the best that we can through individuals such as Mr. Allen and his staff. Our teachers are trained to look out for things. You made mention about social media. And that's why it was so important that we were vigilant in addressing those issues. Mr. Lee is absolutely right. He did a wonderful job offering a letter, of which we all contributed to a degree. But make no bones about it, Jim did a tremendous job of saying, here's what was alleged to have had happened, and here are the facts. And so, I think it's a matter of making sure that people have factual information to be in your student's business, so that they know that you know what's going on. And, you know, quite frankly, we're never gonna know it all, you know? But to have those relationships, and I think a lot of that's going to come, going to come out in the meetings that are going to be had with students and parents. It is, society is much more difficult today than it was 20, 30, 40 years ago with multimedia, with social media, with expectations that are unrealistic sometimes. I do think that stories and things grow. Quite frankly, I think I was a pretty decent football player when I was in high school in football, but it's amazing how the years progress, how much better I'm getting in my own mind. I'm gonna be in the Hall of Fame by the time I'm 75. But I do think that's part of the problem, is that you know youth as well as I do, particularly adolescents. It's important to be the one who provides the information. It's exciting. So, kids sometimes will fabricate those stories. It's difficult because it's our job to make sure we can distinguish the fabrication and the kid that might be saying something to be cool and the kid who actually is maybe experimenting or has information that's going to help us. And that's why I credit Jim and Randy and their staff for being so vigilant about it. We're not perfect by any means.
I'd like to add...
We're gonna try to be.
You know, we are continuing to look for ways to help relieve this issue.
Sure.
But, you know, we had the training in September, as I discussed, with Chatham PD. And the two instances where we had a student under the influence, both, in both those cases, the teacher identified it based on what they learned in service at the beginning of the year.
That's awesome.
So, I mean, we're taking those steps.
Absolutely. So, it's, I mean, I hope that addresses, and like I said, I'm, as, you know, Mr. Lee, he's here for, you lucky duck. he's here for, you lucky dog, here for another couple of months. I don't mean that. But he's retiring, and then, you know, Mr. Tapon is coming on, and he's going to be as vigilant as our staff, because we have a systemic approach to addressing those issues. But I would encourage you with, you know, your friends and your parents, don't be afraid to have those conversations, because the more that those kids know that we have those conversations and aren't afraid to talk about it, the more aware they are of what's going on.
Thanks.
Talk to your administrators. You know, the, the social media is okay, but don't use that as confirmation, because it's usually not accurate.
Yes, no, I understand that completely.
Anybody else? Any comments, questions for the board? You guys good then? Need a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Second?
Second.
All of them favor?
Aye.
Thanks, everybody.